She's a student of the Niagara Institute of Music and Arts where she began taking vocal lessons at the very early age of five. Jenna's musical interest also includes piano, and she takes lessons to develop this talent as well. In her spare time Jenna's hobbies include playing baseball, travel basketball, dance and swimming. And Jenna loves spending time with her family, friends and her dog Harley who loves long walks. Welcome this evening Jenna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True pageant love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[104.81][104.81](Applause)
Again, on behalf of the members of council and those present, we'd like to thank you this evening for joining us and providing us with your rendition of "Oh, Canada." Thank you so much. Members, at this time I'm going to ask for the adoption of the council meeting minutes of July 19th, 2010. Counselor Fisher, moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any further questions or comments? Having seen all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you. This time I'm going to ask for any disclosure of any beginner interest by any members of council. Counselor Wayne?
Yes, from the last meeting, July 19th, check number 338483. It's for my daughter's workplace.
Okay, so noted. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, under Communications, number two, have a family member works for that group.
Okay, so noted. We'll move on to Deputations. This evening, members of council, we have with us Elaine Bassup-Collie, who is going to address counsel on how to implement simple safety measures to avoid infant flu drowning. Welcome, Mrs. Collie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your worship and members of council, I am here to present a suggestion regarding swimming pool safety that I hope council will consider implementing for future and established home swimming pool installations. The following suggestions stem from a tragedy that has occurred recently in my circle of friends. On May 20th, 2010, my dear friend Melissa received a phone call every parent dreads. There's been an accident in the pool. Meet us at the hospital right away. On that day, Melissa and Ryan's worst nightmare came true. Their toddler, Ryland Swayze, not quite three years old, had slipped unnoticed into the pool at his grandparents' home in Kitchener while his caregiver vacuumed up a spill. Rescue crews and doctors were unable to revive him. This loss has devastated their entire family and has far-reaching effects on everyone who knew Melissa and Ryan and their precious baby boy. Thirty years ago, a similar drowning took place in my father's family. A six-year-old cousin, who was visiting with his grandparents, woke early, donned his bathing suit and crept outside to swim by himself. His body was found when the rest of the family awoke. I am asking that council provide the pool inspectors with the following suggestion sheet to supply to every family at their final pool inspection, and also if we could find a way to circulate this sheet to homeowners with existing pools. The hope is that young people will be better protected and homeowners will view their pools not only as a place of relaxation and enjoyment, but also as a danger and a risk to young lives. It's called Ryland's Pool Safety Top Lock. As pool owners, many of us never think that a child's drowning could occur in our pool. Sadly, this year has been particularly deadly for young people and toddlers in our region. Did you know that drowning is the leading cause of death of children, second only to auto accidents? A study by the Canadian Red Cross shows infants and toddlers aged one to four years have among the highest drowning rates in Canada. The following quote is from Rick Casey, the Canadian Red Cross National Director of Injury Prevention Programs. "The tragedy of drownings and near-drownings are particularly heart-wrenching when you consider most of these incidents were preventable. Toddlers are at a high risk because they are naturally curious. And while they are able to walk, they are unstable, tend to be unaware of, and unable to assess risks in their environment. They also lack the capacity for self-rescue. Don't let your pool be the site of such a tragedy. Keep it safe by following this additional suggestion. Install a lock in the top five inches of each and every door leading into the yard containing the swimming pool or pond. The lock could be a chain, a sliding bolt, or even as simple as a large hook and eye. Toddler death can be prevented by such a simple $3 installation." A toddler could slip into the yard completely unnoticed. Most of us think that could never happen to us. We watch our toddlers constantly, right? Think again. The mere flushing of a toilet or a minute-long vacuum session to clean a spill can cause enough noise to mask the sound of the door opening and closing as a child enters the yard. Or a child that rises early and tiptoes downstairs in their bathing suit to enjoy an independent swim before the rest of the household wakes up. Drowning is a silent death. The toddler slips into the pool, their lungs fill in a gasp or two and they sink. It's that quick and it's that quiet. There is no time for screaming, for help, there's rarely any splashing. In the five minutes a caregiver spends looking for the toddler, the unthinkable has happened and has changed the family forever. A child who has just turned two is already capable of quickly unlocking a door's mid-height deadbolt. Toddlers are fast and they are crafty. But a lock at the very top of the door would be impossible for a toddler to open even if standing on a chair. We do understand that these locks may not always be latched, but also point out that a lock is impossible to use if it is never installed. A sticky note applied to the door simply saying "chain" or "top lock" is enough to remind a family members and guests to look up and engage the lock, a reminder to save a life. A small amount of family training is all it takes to protect a young person's right to grow old. A home does not have to house a toddler or small child to require a top lock. I think we would all be hard-pressed to find a home with a pool that has not had a small child as a day visitor or overnight house guest. We are all parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, or friends of young people. We must absolutely do our utmost to prevent senseless drownings. Install your top lock and use it. Just as you installed your yard fencing and self-closing latches outside, protect the people inside your home, family and visitors alike. Please take these steps to prevent a disaster that could change your life forever. Thank you."
Thank you very much, Mrs. Collie. We appreciate you bringing this matter to our attention. As you know, we've lost a number of people throughout Canada this year through drownings, and I think both federal and provincial governments are well-aware of the challenges that we face with people drowning, especially in the hot, hot summers that we've had. I know our clerk would like to make some comments as well, so thank you as well.
Yeah, through your worship, I appreciate Mrs. Collie coming. She initially sent correspondence to your office, which was referred to me, and when I first saw it, I didn't really get the gist of what she was looking for. I sent her a copy of our Swimming Pool Bylaw, which clearly requires that latches to the swimming pool, but then when we had an opportunity to have a conversation, she said, "No, what you really need is a top latch on your doors that are leading outside." And this really hit home with me. As my baby Allison's almost two years old, she can now reach that latch on the screen door, and in fact, on Sunday was playing with it and was annoyed when it was locked and carefully unlocked it herself. So when we had a chance to talk, Mrs. Collie and I, we agreed that the best solution here is really an educational solution, because, you know, it's difficult to legislate, especially the top latches, when a lot of our legislation these days is very mindful of accessibility issues, which almost prohibit top latches. So we figured that really an educational process is what needs to happen. And as she suggested at the outset of her presentation, what we're suggesting to council is that this information be given to our building department so it can be distributed when inspections take place, when applications for building permits related to swimming pools take place, and if we can do some other education, by all means, we'll try our best.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And I think in terms of education, City Hall usually puts out notices at the beginning of different seasons, whether it's, you know, not to park on the city street during the winter months, or, you know, to keep your grass cut in the summertime. I don't think that it would be unreasonable for City Hall to put out a notice letting residents know the requirements of safety if they have a pool in their backyard, and then to give some helpful hints as well. There's also our website, your worship, that we can publish this on. One question I had, though, is that, I mean, the bylaw, is that sent down from the province? Because, I mean, if council feels strong enough that top latches are something that should be required, then perhaps we should be asking the province to change the legislation as a place, or perhaps we can change it ourselves.
Our city solicitor wishes to make a comment. Mr. Beeman?
It is within council's discretion to modify the Swimming Pool Bylaw. The Swimming Pool Bylaw is getting on a bit, so it might be an idea, just as a matter of course, for staff to look at it in any event. And if council were to direct, I'd be happy to look through it with Mr. Afrieta's staff and Mr. Costrelli's staff, and look at some of the precedents from other municipalities. I know, for example, St. Catherine's did have some specifications in there about doors that access into pools, hot doors and houses, and doors from garages. And so I'd be happy to look at others and come back to council with suggestions as to how we might improve our bylaw, or indeed if it doesn't need to be improved, to tell council that as well.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, if I would make a motion, then that it be referred to staff and that staff come back with some possible changes to our bylaw. I mean, I understand that it might not come back in this season, but it would definitely be back for next season.
Thank you. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, refer to staff, seconded by Counselor Diadati. Any further comments or questions by members of council? Yes, Counselor Wayne?
I think in the interim, if there are any more, I know it's getting on in the season, but if there are any more pool inspections being done, I like the idea that this piece Mrs. Collie has written be circulated to those owners, and also, I don't think it would hurt for us to circulate it to other municipalities.
Do you want to add that to the motion? Counselor Peter Angelo, is that okay with you? A second or? Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so all those in favor? Thank you, the motion's carried. Mrs. Collie, thank you very much. We hope that this might make a difference with someone that could possibly have prevented a drowning, so disaster. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Diadati?
Yeah, your worship, and I should also mention, I had a conversation with the publisher of the review, and they've also agreed to run the ad for free with your suggestions, so that's gonna happen as well.
Great, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, move on to the next item. Mr. Clerk, if you would, I do see, next item on the agenda, please.
Your worship, the public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning by law to permit a proposed cosmetic treatment clinic on the second floor at 4407 Montrose Road. Notice was given by First Class Mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, July 9th, 2010, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
This time I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlavich?
Thank you, worship. The application before you is, as the clerk has outlined, amend the Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw to permit the two dwelling units on the second floor of the property at 4407 Montrose to be used as a clinic. The, um, I'll do that slide. The property is located on the west side of Montrose Road, immediately north of Alpine Drive. It has an area of about .2 hectares, half an acre. To the north of the property and west is vacant land, which is to be used as townhouse development in the future. To the south are semi-detached and single-family houses. On the east side of Montrose Road are industrial properties. The, uh, the site plan that's been submitted by the, excuse me, the Cordascos, shows the existing building. It was originally a dwelling with a garage at the back. The parking lot, as it exists today, to service the chiropractic clinic that exists on the ground floor, is located at the north side of the property. The applicant indicates that the balance of the front yard would be used for landscaped open space. It would extend a driveway to the rear of the property to provide seven additional parking spaces, a total of 15 parking spaces as required. In looking at the background behind this, the lands are currently designated residential in the official plan with a special policy, which provides for the ground floor area to be used as a clinic, that's the only, or as an office. That's the only area of the building that's allowed for commercial at the current time. The zoning bylaw for the property is currently an R2 zone with a site-specific provision to allow personal service shop or office use on the ground floor up to 140 square meters. The, there was a neighborhood meeting held on July 5th. There was concern about the expansion expressed by those who had come forward. However, they also said that they would be willing to live with it if there could be certain mitigation measures, such as paving the parking area, proper drainage, wood fencing, and preserving the existing trees next to the property. The official plan, as I mentioned, was, designates the lands as a special policy area. Those policies have been in place since 2004. The commercial uses are intended to be interim, but over the long term, that the area would develop for multiple-family residential. The applicant is proposing to just extend that commercial use for the interim, and the planning, and having reviewed that, has found that to be acceptable, because the loss of the two residential units on the second floor won't have an impact on the inventory of residential units in the area. The uses within the, will be contained within the existing building, thus limiting the extent of commercial development on the property. The proposed uses would not create an excessive amount of traffic, noise, or other nuisances. Some minor increase in floor area for commercial purposes, so therefore, we didn't see there would be any impact on any of the adjacent planned or operation, the operating, commercial uses in the area. As well, the potential impacts of on-site movements for parking can be mitigated through site design. The one area, so where staff has seen things slightly different than the applicant, and that is, comes really down to site design. The property right now has a large gravel area in the south, along the south lot line. You can see cars are parked here. This is the area where it showed its grassed area on the plan. So since we found that much of the site was already being used for parking, staff proposed that basically they contain the parking at the front of the property, retaining as much of the back of the property for landscaped area. This is largely a site plan issue, but we do need to address some of these requirements through the zoning provisions. So as I say, staff doesn't have a concern with amending the official plan to allow the clinic use on the second floor. It has more to do with the site design aspects. The property, as I mentioned, is zoned residential, single-family and two-family, an R2 zone. That would be retained, but they would also have the additional amendment to allow that the second floor would also be used as a clinic use. A total of 15 parking spaces are required. There's a site-specific provisions then would be, would need to be put in place with respect to the lot coverage and the parking area relative to the amount of lot area. Those are outlined on the screen. As well, the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting had asked for a 2.5-high wood fence along the west side. That would not be necessary if we don't allow the parking in the rear yard, so we would be recommending a 1.8-meter-high wood fence, as well the minimum landscaped area, 45% on the property, with a three-meter-wide landscape strip between the parking area and the southerly side yard. That would protect the mature trees that are already on that side, as well as a three-meter-wide landscape strip along Montrose Road to enhance the aesthetics of that area. The applicant, we have to enter into a site plan agreement with the city, since this is a intensification of the existing property. Therefore, staff is supporting the amendments as submitted for conversion of the two residential uses. That's not going to have an impact on the housing inventory. It's a slight increase in commercial use. The use of the commercial buildings will not impact on the commercial areas, and the revised site plan can address some of the potential impact. Therefore, staff is recommending that the official plan and zoning be amended to permit the second floor of the dwelling to be used as a clinic. Those are the highlights of the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlavich. And once again, the public is advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 17, subsection 24 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone present other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Once again, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, at this time I'm going to call the applicant forward then, please, if we could. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you. Are there any comments you wish to make, Dr. Cordasco or your wife?
Um, no, they pretty much covered it. We're definitely agreeable to the change in parking. I guess that's site plan, but that's not a problem.
Good, thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Cordasco or his wife? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure of council. Move the recommendation that was over here, I'm sorry.
(Inaudible).
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, yes, we'll close the meeting first of all. We'll declare the meeting closed at this point, and the pleasure of council. Yes, Counselor Thompson?
The only thing I saw was in one of the letters of concern, they were talking about drainage. Somebody from engineering gave us some assurance of the drainage problem that they've identified is going to be looked after.
Mr. Hurlavich, could you address that at all?
I'm sorry, I don't have the comments, but we would cover that through the site plan process.
Okay. And I know we have a bylaw with respect to the lighting for the parking lots, so that wouldn't be a problem.
That's correct. Okay, thank you. And I did hear a motion. It's Counselor Diadati, moved by Counselor Diadati, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All righty. You've heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask that it be added that the neighbors be invited to be involved in the site planning process.
Does that mean with the approval of the mover and seconder? Okay, fine, we'll make that friendly amendment. Members of council, any other comments then? We'll call the vote, all those in favor. Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. Members of council, I just have a few comments this evening. As you know, August is the month we look forward to the annual conference for the Association of Municipalities in Ontario. This year, council representatives, along with myself, will be traveling to Windsor to discuss issues of importance to municipalities across our province. And this year, we have requested to discuss critical issues such as transportation, healthcare, and provincial funding for projects with various ministers and members of government. Look forward to our return and providing an update with unearths discussion at our next council meeting on August 30th. In the meantime, I'd like to make you aware of a number of exciting events that are coming up in our city. As you know, the annual Flower and Vegetable Show is celebrating its 89th year, and tomorrow the Niagara Falls Horticultural Society hosts the annual show at the Niagara Falls Public Library. I invite members of the public to come and view the exceptional submissions from residents around our community and to support growth, gardening, and the efforts to keep Niagara Falls green. Club Italia's Bigot Tomato Fest is taking place on Sunday, August 22nd, at Club Italia in Niagara Falls. You may call the office there at 905-374-7388 for more information about this year's events. And many are looking forward to the Niagara Falls Elvis Festival coming up later this month, between August 19th and 22nd. Performances for this festival will be held at the Niagara Falls Center for the Arts and Oaks Garden Center Theater, amongst other locations in the city. And I encourage you to visit niagarafalselviefestival.com for more information or tickets. That concludes my comments. Move on to communications and comments of the city clerk. Mr. Clerk, do we have any additional items? Do we have that one additional item that was added with regard to the bylaw relief? Is that correct?
Branch 479?
Yes, Branch 479. Members of council, you have a fourth item. Legion Branch 479 is having a heart and stroke fundraiser on September 18th. The organizers requesting relief from the noise bylaw to allow amplified music until 11:00 PM. The stage of music will be directed away from the residence toward their building and the hydro field. Staff has no issues or subject to the Legion notifying any nearby residential properties. So, pleasure of council, moved in whole. Is that, Pastor Peter Angelo, is that correct? Moved them all? Okay. Seconded by Counselor Diadati. Once again, you heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Move on to reports. I'm going to call on the Chair of Community Services for ratification. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of the July 19th, 2010 meeting be approved. Under reports PD 21061, matters arising from the MHC and Victoria Queen Fountain, let the report be received for information. Under PD 21069, supplemental report Queen Victoria Fountain Monument, let the Queen Victoria Fountain be removed from its current location intact, if physically possible, by qualified mason following proper and prescribed heritage preservation practices and held in storage. And that staff, the museum board, the municipal heritage committee, and the Maiden and Ferry BIA work together to determine the appropriate future location for the monument and report back to council. Under CD 201008, the Niagara Military Museum, let a 30-month lease be prepared between the city and the Niagara Military Museum. That at the end of the 30-month lease, there be a complete review and report presented to council on the long-term viability of the Niagara Military Museum prior to any further commitment by the city, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the lease. Under PD 21062, status of the Special Purpose Reserve within the Historic Drummondville CIP area, let council receive the breakdown of the Special Purpose Reserve for the Historic Drummondville CIP, and rescind the approval of five CIP applications based on the inactivity taking place on the properties, with the applicants of the inactive applications able to revive their applications if they so wish without having to formally reapply. Under F 201048, assessment of outdoor inventory areas, let council petition impact through AMO for amendments to the Assessment Act to outdoor tax inventory areas. Under TS 21037, Niagara Airbus vehicles, let the report be deferred. TS 201038, family and children's services charter request, let council approve the request of tax for a grant equal to the cost of charter services. Under CA 21006, Gale Central Arms, let the report be received for the information of council. Under CD 21007, political advertising, let the corporate advertising policy state the following. Regarding political advertising, the city will not allow advertising either directly or through third-party arrangements that promotes or may be construed to promote a political party or candidate, as to avoid any impression that the city is supporting any particular party or candidate. And under new business, let a letter be sent to Toronto Blue Jay All-Star John Buck inviting him to Niagara Falls, and I salute.
Moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Diadati. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Move on to ratification of in-camera recommendations. Mr. Clerk?
Couple items, your worship, that council reconfirm its February 22nd approval, approving the city-owned Salt Yard site on Stanley Avenue for the People Mover Operations Maintenance and Storage Facility. And that staff investigate the opportunity to combine the People Mover and the Niagara Falls Transit operations on the selected site and report back to council following the investigation. That's item one. Item two, the council will ratify the amended collective agreement between the corporation and the city of Niagara Falls and the amalgamated transit union and its local 1582, and the bylaw related to that will come back on August 30th.
Thank you. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to speak against the first, I'd like to vote against the first one and speak to it, please.
Sure.
The clerk just gives an overview to the residents of what we're going to do, so I'm going to try to sum it up. I voted against it downstairs. I had asked for it February 22nd to be deferred. Basically, I'm going to summarize it. If I'm wrong, somebody will correct me, I'm sure. Out of the People Mover $50 million, we have an opportunity to spend $14 million of it to move our, our 16 million, I'm sorry, 16 million, to move our, to invest into our bus maintenance center, and it's the bus terminal across the street from the train station. Staff brought council back a report in camera that basically led us to staff's consultant decision to move it out to the Stanley Avenue area across the street from the service center. And I will state my objections for the following reasons. This council had an opportunity to invest $16 million of People Mover money and not taxpayers' dollars, property tax dollars. taxpayers' dollars, property tax dollars, into the downtown area. And I say that because we have $16 million that we can use. And this council was told that one of the reasons to move this new $16 million building out to Stanley Avenue is because there's not enough acreage in the downtown. And we were also told that we could be seeing a second step development on that piece of property in the downtown. And I'm going to keep saying downtown so that the downtown BIA actually gets an idea of what we're doing and what the ramifications of this vote does. And we were told that there was not enough acreage to be down here to build this new building. So downstairs in camera, I asked council, I asked staff, can you tell us how much it would have cost us to purchase the land to get us the proper acreage? Staff doesn't know. I asked staff if you went to the abutting properties beside that bus terminal and asked if they would be willing to sell at fair market value to the city and would they actually have the cost? They didn't do that either. So let me get this clear on what you voted on. You did not find out from the abutting properties whether they would sell us in an affordable manner their properties to build downtown. Staff told council that this is just a maintenance building that will be going out on Stanley Avenue, but I believe it's much more than that. I think that this was council's opportunity to literally, literally put their money where their mouth has been for the past two terms and invest $16 million into the downtown core. Now, I'm not quite certain why we would think anybody else would come and do that now because, given the opportunity, we didn't do it. I don't even think we went out of our way to find out if we could do it. I think we were given a report that drove us to the Stanley Avenue site, and that decision was made long before it got to council. And I know staff will disagree with me. I think our actions speak louder than words. I think that even when given a choice to publicly invest $16 million into the downtown, council chose not to do it. And I don't know what message you think this sends to outside investors, but I'm going to say what I've been standing here saying for the last two terms. I did not believe it was Aaron Lickman's job. I do not believe it is Mordecai Grun's job. I do not believe it is Historic Niagara's job to redevelop downtown. I think it's council's job to redevelop downtown. I've always thought it was council's job to redevelop downtown. That's why we, that's why we termed our motion to not spend $33 million into Aaron Lickman's false plan. I think that's why we capped it up to $12 million. I think that's why council even has been giving down CIP monies to springalicious and events contrary to what our own staff has told us, because we really believe that this is what we have to do. I have stood here and spoke for two terms against Aaron Lickman, Mordecai Grun, Historic Niagara, us handing the buck off, literally, to other people saying, please redevelop our downtown. It shocked me to see the council members of the day who sit through the downtown steering committee meetings and waste time of their life they can never get back, vote against this development downtown, not because we had all the information, but because we don't have all the information. I would have liked to vote knowing whether the people, whether the properties beside that bus terminal were willing to sell to the city. I would have liked to know if it was an affordable cost that this council was willing to take. I would have liked to scream to outside investors that this council was willing to invest $16 million downtown. And I know you can stand up and spin it, and you will, any which way you want it otherwise, but we don't know whether we'd have had to expropriate, because I think that word's thrown out kind of like a threat to council. We don't know what the cost would have been. We don't know any of those things. But I do know that we've missed a $16 million investment opportunity to the downtown, and I want the BIA to know, having not always thought what they were doing was right, really think that this council saw the short picture instead of the big picture, and I think we missed a huge investment opportunity in our downtown core. And all that we will have left possibly counting on a group that really hasn't done everything they promised is a potential bus stop, as told to us downstairs across the street from the train station. So I'd just like to vote as opposed.
Okay, any comments? Councilor Carroll.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just would like myself to mark as opposed as well. I just feel that not enough was done to see if we could have made that investment downtown. I really feel that that was, it was a done deal when it was brought to us, that it was going on Stanley, and that we really didn't have much of an opportunity. You know, for all the right reasons that staff has indicated on the reports, they're suggesting it go to Stanley, but I think it would have sent a tremendous message to downtown if we could have invested that $16 million downtown. And I understand it's just, it's a repair facility, but it's more than that. It's $16 million that the city council has control to spend, and I think it would have been a tremendous message to other investors and to other people if we could have some way invested that money in the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Fisher.
Thank you. I too opposed the results. I am in favor of putting the money down here. Thank you.
Councilor Thompson.
Is nobody going to respond to them? My God, why does it, why does it, why does everybody sit there like mutes and they don't respond to it? My God, the information we had downstairs is totally contrary to what we're hearing. I wanted, I wanted the support for downtown. I asked Mr. Filicetti if there had been any dialogue, if there had been discussions with the downtown, and there was. They were discussing downtown, and the downtown said we would like not to have a maintenance facility, which this is, this is to repair buses, a maintenance facility in their prime downtown area where they would like to have a major attraction. It's exactly what Mr. Filicetti said. So there was dialogue with the downtown, so, and I was, I also made the comment, I'd like to defer the matter to get more information, to see if we could get the downtown interested in doing something, because that's where my heart was and what I wanted to do. But I don't like to be called stupid when I come up from a meeting, because I listened and I read the whole report, and I read all of the information. And it told you that the monies, the $50 million, and everybody has made it clear all around this table, particularly I and Omi, we will not spend ten, ten cents on the People Mover system, and that has been, and I'm fine with that. So, all of a sudden now, we have the opportunity to, to spend $50 million, no more, on a facility. We can't expropriate. You have three acres down there. You need a minimum of six acres for this site, a minimum of six acres. You can't spend for legal fees. You can't do, and there's no land down there to expropriate unless just come across on the other side of Erie Avenue. So I really wanted to vote for something for the downtown, but it was clearly pie in the sky. And all of the information was there, and hopefully, somebody from staff, other than a politician getting up and shooting his mouth off, can get up and give some factual information about the details of the report that we heard downtown. People around the table here wanted the support to downtown. And when we got all of the information, it was impossible to do so in spite of the fact that we tried to defer it, and it wasn't, it wasn't appropriate because the contact has already been made. So I hope that somebody. Where's Mr. Filicetti? He's not.
We have Mr. Todd to respond.
Oh, yeah. Are you capable of relaying all of Mr. Filicetti's comments?
Because I think you can have that.
I'm going to give it my best shot, Councilor. Anyway. I was just waiting to be asked to comment.
Oh, good, good. I'll let her hear it.
Well, first of all, if I could just clarify it for, for the public, we receive $50 million towards the People Mover project. That has to go completely to capital projects. It cannot be used for land acquisition or legal fees, but it can be used for capital improvements or capital expansion, building, rolling stocks such as buses. It can also include improvements to stations and on-street things that would go along with accompanying the People Mover system. Now, in terms of our investigation for a site, we need a site that can house with the People Mover. It is a total of 27 new buses. Those are both 40-foot buses that you would typically see around the city and articulating buses, which are your accordion-style 60-foot buses. It was quite evident early on in our discussion that the existing site could not accommodate an additional magnitude of buses, and we had to look for alternative sites. The first part of the process that we went into really had nothing to do with the replacement of our existing conventional bus building, which is on Bridge Street. The investigation really was out looking for where could we house a facility that could have a maintenance and bus storage for the People Mover system? And based on that exercise, we identified, I think at the end of the day, it was something like close to 20, close to 20 sites across the municipality. There were a number of sites that we shortlisted. For one reason or another, they fell off mainly because of timing. And we have to have the $50 million spent by March of 2012, and, I'm sorry, 2013. And in order to get going on investigations, we tried to identify properties where we felt we could meet that timeframe. So it's a very short building construction design period. So certain sites that may have had environmental issues or other issues that we thought may draw out didn't score as high in our rating when we went and evaluated all 20 sites. Now, we shortlisted the sites. Downtown really became an impediment because of the size and because of the fact that it still is occupying our existing conventional system. We, as we speak today, have not decided or made any decision for council to relocate that existing Bridge Street location of our conventional buses to Stanley Avenue. The $16 million that have been earmarked is only for the People Mover. If council is to decide to move the Bridge Street operation to Stanley Avenue, our estimates, that could be anywhere up to $10 million in additional money that would come out of city coffers. Our exercise at this point, as Councilor Thompson indicated, we went into this process with the view that council has made very clear to staff in the past that we're to accomplish the People Mover system without spending any municipal dollars. So that was part of the evaluation thought process that we went through. How can we find a site to locate the People Mover on without having to expend money either in land acquisition or legal fees? And we went through the exercise of evaluating all the sites. And because we currently own ourselves municipally the Stanley Avenue site, that could be seen as a contribution on behalf of the corporation without having to actually expend those monies by paying to buy additional lands. So that was a thought process we went through. In terms of our investigation, our thought process on the downtown, the second part of the recommendation that'll be coming back to you is that we investigate whether or not it's feasible to have the existing conventional transit facility moved at the same time and move out to Stanley Avenue. That site will accommodate both. That decision has not been made. That has to undergo further investigation, where we will report back to council and indicate to you what the cost of that relocation would be. Now, we've had some preliminary estimates on our existing system, our existing conventional transit building on Bridge Street, and the estimate's been anywhere between $3 and $4 million that we would need to put into that building just to bring it up to current code. So we thought this was an opportunity to do that further exploration, to see whether or not we could look at moving both facilities out there and, at the end of the day, having a brand-new facility that would house both the conventional system and the new People Mover system. With respect to the downtown location, Bridge Street location, with all due respect, Councilor, I think our vision was a little bit more than a bus stop. Our vision is having the existing intercity transit terminal maintained and hopefully enhanced. There are other dollars within the People Mover capital budget, somewhere around $2.5 million that, out of that 50, that we believed we could take that corner and perhaps either look at selling part of it for other development, whether it be other commercial or residential development on that corner. And in the meantime, enhancing the transit terminal to have Go Bus, the Go Train and Via Train is right there, and we would also make that a stop on the People Mover route. So we envisioned it as being a hub where all of our intercity transit and interior transit would come, and that would be a focal point, and we do have some money in the People Mover budget to accommodate that. The other point in terms of what this facility would look like, we really didn't feel that having that type of facility in the downtown was the best use. That came under some of the valuation criteria. I understand that it would be a $16 million investment in downtown, but you have to remember, probably almost half of that investment would simply be bus storage. In other words, you'd be building a, a building that would be warehouse kind of storage where you simply would park your buses and, you know, we really thought that there was a better use of downtown space than that type of facility, which, which in many cases is more identifiable with a light industrial or industrial type of setting rather than in the core of your downtown. And that's why, that's one of the, one of the criteria that led us to our direction to look at a site outside of downtown. So, Mr. Mayor, I hope I've explained or answered most of the questions. I'm, I'll stay on my feet because I'm sure there'll be a few other questions there.
Councilor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, Your Worship, I mean, primarily, I was just going to ask for staff to stand up and give an opinion on what led us to the decision. Mr. Todd has quite, quite clearly articulated why council made the decision that they did. But I think, Your Worship, if you talk about in terms of what downtown needs, and Mr. Todd went into it in detail as well, downtown needs an attractor. And I don't believe that a maintenance and storage facility for buses is the attractor that they're looking for. And I know the name Mordecai was thrown around, and if anyone stopped the Mordecai and asked him if he wants this facility, they'll tell you exactly. I need an attractor. I need something that's going to bring people downtown. I don't think people are going to come to look at a brand-new building that, that stores buses and go, oh, look at that, ooh, look at that bus there, ooh, and that one's got two wheels on it. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Maves.
Yes, I'd just like to point out, too, I was originally opposed to that site until I could all the, the other alternatives and the fact that, as mentioned before, I'm sure just to reiterate what, what Mr. Todd said, we cannot expropriate, expropriate. And I know years ago, Niagara Transit tried to, to buy some lands, further expand in that area. We were unsuccessful. So anyway, I see that as expropriation, which takes a long time. The other fact is we're not allowed to use money to buy other lands in this, with this $16 million, so that's going to buy the boards. And I really think that this is the most appropriate site because it's close to the Niagara Park roadways and, as well as, it's not that far from downtown. It's close to the arena, if that's ever going to be used for transportation, for tourists who may want to catch a hockey game with their children and go and see some sights and back to the arena where the car is. So I see it as a great property. And, and I think that eventually, the old transit property will probably be a hub for the railroad people, the Go Station, our own People Mover system, and so I think it's going to work out very well. So I think it's a good choice.
Okay. Already, you have a motion then to ratify the in-camera actions, please. Moved by Councilor DiDati, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. Yes, Councilor Peter Angelo.
Your Worship, I think the only thing that I wanted to say that I didn't was, I mean, if council was to relocate this facility downtown, it would cost the taxpayers millions upon millions of dollars in land acquisition. I mean, we, we would need an extra three acres. We have no idea what that, what that would cost us. We have issues with servicing that go underneath the land that we've already been told. We have drainage ditches that we would have to replace properly, and we have legal costs, Your Worship. So I, I, I think it's a good decision.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion before us, members of council, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. We have a property matter, members of council as well. We have a report number L 2010-12 to declare surplus old parks and recreational building at 7565 Lundys Lane. We have a recommendation by staff in the report, and I'd like to ask, first of all, is anyone here who has an interest in respecting this property at the corner of Lundys Lane and Montrose Road? Anyone here has an interest in this land? Anyone here has an interest in this land? Okay, having seen none, then I'll entertain a motion from members of council. Pleasure of council. Councillor Diodati? Move the recommendation, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Once again, any comments? Yes, councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I, I have a problem with the sale of this property. I think you have a cemetery directly adjacent to it. I, I don't think the, I think the initial proposal regarding the property or utilizing it or keeping it in the city's domain and also utilizing it for some municipal purposes, maybe in the long term, but I think that's much better than having Joe's Pete Saria signs out there with all of the debris and the parking when you've got still some funerals to take place. And I just think it's a lost opportunity, particularly when everybody's talking so much about maintaining historic properties. I, I think we're making a mistake. I think even utilizing it as a revenue source for the municipality for cemetery plots is better than what we're suggesting here, so I'm going to vote against.
Okay. Just to point out that we have declared the property as protected, property is being sold that way, and perhaps council is aware that if the property does not sell, you have alternatives, so you're in the driver's seat as far as that goes, but just to let you know. So we have a motion before us, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by, or was it, no, moved by councillor Diodati, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? Three. Motion's carried, thank you very much. Move on to the consent agenda, pleasure of council. Move the consent agenda in whole by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diodati. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. We have a resolution, members of council, asking for the petition, the province to be petitioned to continue the anterior municipal funding to municipalities in the nonspecific area classification, or in the alternative, be it resolved that the province phase in the funding reduction over four years to allow municipalities to the, the opportunity to the plan, to plan for the shortfall. Moved by councillor Wing, seconded by councillor Einoni. Once again, you heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Move on to the bylaws. Mr. Clerk, are there additional bylaws for council's consideration this evening? Having seen none, then, can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws? Bylaws have been given a first reading, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diodati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried.
Bylaws 2010-119 to 2010-128, read a first time.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diodati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried.
Bylaws 2010-19 to 2010-128, read a second and third time and passed.
Any new business as well, members of council? Yes, councillor Diodati?
Yes, your worship, just one new business item. As we're all aware here, the elections this year have been moved forward by two weeks, and I had a discussion with a clerk earlier today, and that's fine. However, the government seems to have overlooked the fact that the beginning of the new council had not been altered to reflect the two-week forward movement of the elections. And unfortunately, the problem is, we end up in a little bit of a stalemate situation with the council. Our very first meeting isn't going to be of the new council, isn't going to be until December the 13th, just before Christmas. We've got budgetary decisions to be made, and unfortunately, your worship, there isn't going to be very much time to get involved into the budget process, puts staffs at a disadvantage when they can't go out early tendering for a lot of the work that they need to do. And it was suggested that we should petition the province and AMO to amend the Municipal Elections Act, clearing the way for the municipalities to amend their procedural bylaws, and this way they can factor in the earlier date and maximize the period of productivity for the municipalities. So I would make that motion, your worship.
Do you have a recommended date at all, councillor?
Well, I would suggest two weeks earlier, your worship. If everything could get moved two weeks earlier. The election was moved two weeks earlier, but the Municipal Elections Act was not amended to reflect those two weeks, so.
So you're essentially.
There's a seven-week period from election to the very first council meeting where nothing major is going to happen.
Are you essentially asking for the new term of council to begin at an earlier date?
That's exactly what I'm suggesting.
Okay, do you want to?
Yeah, sure. And, you know, the wordsmith clerk could work that in, we already had a long discussion about it today. But yeah, essentially moving the term of council forward, but the clerk cannot do that until the Municipal Elections Act changed, and then we could change that. Obviously, we're looking at the next term in four years, but regardless, it's just two weeks of dead time, that nothing major is going to happen.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, just one point of clarification. Your councillor Diodati referred to December 13th, that'll actually be your second meeting. Your inaugural meeting's usually the week before, but the inaugural meeting is usually more of a, you know, formal type of meeting, or more of a ceremonial meeting than a formal meeting.
Yeah, correct. That's correct. Okay, do you want to vote on that motion? Any other comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Motion adjourned. Moved by councillor Einoni, seconded by councillor Maves. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.